Did pass last week. It passed in, I guess, majority fashion despite some of the naysayers out there that we're not well-prepared. I think we had a good plan. We had good items in it. We did our homework. It resonated with the public, so I think we got a pretty good approval on that. So I would like to thank everyone who was involved in getting the ban passed, every pass, every yes voter. I know we hit social media pretty hard. I got all tired of my non-Saline friends pinging me and saying, "I don't care what you guys are doing there." You gotta put up with it for another week because I'm not being selected. So, good job, everyone. Thank you. So this is the part of the meeting where someone may have public comment. Would anyone like to have public comment tonight? Administration?
Just one quick comment because we have a lot on the agenda. Just the one thing to thank everyone who participated last Friday in the match day program. We looked to develop a match for a former student who has leukemia, who's a daughter of one of our staff members. So I appreciate all the folks who took time out of their day. One, if they were within the age window to get swabbed, but also who supported that wearing orange that day, and I really appreciate that. The next and second announcement I do have is that Patty Walz does have 20 pre-sale playoff tickets to sell. If anyone wants to get their playoff pre-sale tickets now as opposed to later, you have the game, seven o'clock, Horn Stadium against Canton Chiefs.
There you go. Blow the rain and wind away.
Yeah, it's gonna be nice.
Can I have a motion to approve the agenda as printed? Someone? Second? All those in favor, please signify by saying yes. Yes. Those opposed? Hearing none. Motion carries seven to zero. Schedule reports. Our state championship field hockey team.
Quick call of Frank Hervison forward.
First, want to say thank you for having us here tonight and congratulations on passing the bond, Milt. That's exciting. This is becoming quite a habit coming before you to introduce our next state champion. So, love to tell you a little bit about our field hockey team led by Coach Eric O'Reilly, Coach, and our assistant coach, Eric Boyer, who's also our newly hired girls lacrosse coach. So a little bit about their season. They won the regular season championship and only had 78 goals for and only three goals against a super dominating team that just dominate play. Seventeen, one and one was their overall record, ending in obviously, as you know, our state championship. I don't know if any of you have had a chance to see a field hockey game. It's an exciting sport. I'm rather new to field hockey. I've been to about five contests now, maybe six contests, and each one more exciting than the one before. But the last game, I have to tell you, and I know these girls could probably go into great detail, but the game went to overtime and then they play an overtime period where they reduce from 11 players to seven players. Is that correct, girls? Okay, so then it's 77 for a 10-minute period. Again, they went to another overtime, which was a five-person, one-at-a-time shootout, much like you'd see in the NHL. And our goalie, I have to say, I'm going to brag a little bit about Kennedy Boyer. Kennedy, please stand up. Our goalie was... Kennedy was absolutely amazing. She came out very aggressively and literally just knocked the ball away from the other players and then just, I don't know, the wherewithal and the ability and her athleticism to overcome and succeed. And I think all of these young ladies here before us really represent that. They represent what Saline High School and Saline Athletics stand for, and that ability to persevere, rise up, and succeed. And they stand before you today as state champions. So I introduce this year's field hockey team. (applause)
Any one of the captains want to come up with a statement?
(inaudible) I'm Rachel Schmidt, the two-year varsity captain, and I would like to thank the community and all the fans for the support this year. We've had the most people at our games, and I think it really led to our success. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, thank you.
I don't know if you all know Paul Heineck, but you were a board member of the field hockey, the field hockey, probably the first field hockey board.
Uh-oh.
I mean, so Paul has been a huge contributor to the field hockey program. I can't even say enough, but we probably wouldn't have gotten to this point without your help way back when. And I know you continue to help the program, and obviously Danny Heineck was our assistant coach last year and helped out this year as well. So, our captain said it all. Thank you guys so much for all of your support this year. I don't think we could have done it without you. This is an amazing group of girls. I was with them when we started the middle school program. They were my eighth graders, so the seniors. So stand up, seniors. Great job.
Just a quick one and thank you to both our coaches. They really epitomize what we expect out of our employees and our varsity coaches and our coaches at Saline. They stand for what's right, have structured practices, they have high demands, they place responsibility upon their players, and their girls have risen to that level and found success. So, we're super proud of them. Thank you for letting us be here.
Can we get a quick, if you guys stay right there, Professor Robinson, can you get over there? We got a quick picture.
All right. Thank you to the exiting girls' field hockey team. Having watched a lot of those girls play over the last couple of years, it was exciting to see them win the championship. So our next schedule report is our audit report of the district for the 2014-2015 school year. Assistant Superintendent Warner?
Yep, we've got Jeff Dahlway and Anthony Sassenowski here from Plant Moran to give the board presentation, and I will be my clicker.
I wanted to equal a lot of emotion and excitement.
Yeah. No, but you know, I've watched your cross-country team run back in regionals a couple of weeks ago, and you guys have a powerhouse cross-country team as well, so a lot of good things happening here. My name is Jeff Dahlway. I'm the audit partner on the engagement, and with me is Anthony Sassenowski. Anthony is what we call the in-charge of the audit. He's here on a daily basis when we're out doing field work, making sure that the audit's going smoothly, working with Janice and the rest of the staff to make sure that things are happening as they should be, and basically getting into the detail of the audit and pushing it forward. My thought is to give you a little bit of a background on the audit process, give you the results, and then Anthony will go over about seven or eight different slides that really focus on the general fund of the district. The audit process. So we start back in, I'd say, mid-May when we start talking with Janice about what's happening within the district, look at any kind of unusual transactions or accounting issues that might have popped up during the year, make sure we got our hands around those. We come out for a couple of days to do some preliminary work, field work. We start getting into some of the federal program testing and the federal programs. We do transaction walkthroughs and test the various systems like payroll and cash disbursements, look at the bank recs and wire transfers, things like that. Then we come back out in mid to late summer, and we spend about two weeks out in the field with about three people. And this is where we're really kicking the tires on the balance sheets and the P and L of the various funds. We then assemble the financial statements. We send them up to a different group within our firm. That's a quality control check, if you will, the professional standards group. So then they take a read through the financials. If they have any issues or questions, we address those. We get back with Janice, make sure we're on the same page, and then we wrap up the audit, issue the reports, and then we come here tonight to go over the results. So that's the synopsis of the process. The results. So we've got two different reports that we've issued. The first is about a 55-page statement, and that includes all of your funds, you know, from general fund to capital projects, community services, athletics, and so on. It also contains a number of footnotes, so we've got about 20 pages of footnotes, and that gives you a lot of the detail about your accounting policies and a lot of the detail about significant balances like your long-term debt. You can find your interest rates, maturities, your scheduled maturing payments, things like that. On that financial statement, I'm pleased to report that we've issued an unqualified opinion. So it might not sound good, but that's actually the highest level of assurance we can render on a financial statement. The other report that we have is a report on the audit of your federal programs. So the district receives about $2 million of federal programs spread through about 10 to 12 different actual programs. If you receive more than a half million dollars from the federal government, you're required to have an audit. And this audit that we go through is a lot different than the financial statement audit. We look at compliance issues. So think about your school lunch program. There's eligibility requirements, so we'd be looking at eligible participants. We look at reporting back to the federal government. We look at things like reimbursement requests, make sure that those are done timely, that they tie out to the records. So we're looking at compliance issues. I'm also pleased to report that we've issued an unqualified opinion on your federal programs as well. So we did not have any sort of non-compliance issues, or we did not come across any unallowable costs. So two reports, two clean opinions. And I guess if you step back, you know, from my perspective and just kind of look at the audit overall, I'm happy to report also that during the course of the audit, we did not come across any adjustments that we found as a result of our procedures. And additionally, we did not come across any control issues, internal control issues, where if we, you know, let's say a transaction was missed or booked incorrectly or an invoice didn't get recorded properly, you know, we typically have to write that up, put it in a letter and say, "We've got an internal control deficiency." So we don't have any of those either. So those two items, no adjustments, no control issues, that's unusual. So I'd say that about 90, 95% of the audits that I do, we usually have one or the other. So I think it's a testament to Janice and her staff that you've got a good set of clean records, you're getting good information throughout the year, which I think is really important when you're making decisions from it. So with that, I'm going to turn over to Anthony. He's got about seven, eight slides on your general fund to talk to you.
All right. So the first slide we're looking at here are just some significant budget items that we wanted to go over. These are definitely some one-time increases or decreases to the general fund balance that are really specific to 2015. Just wanted to highlight a couple of them. The first one is the Act 18 reimbursement restatement from '13 and '14, and we got the funds in 2015. About $1.28 million received from the ISD as a result of excess fund balance held at the ISD, but this is really just a one-year item. We'll bring up a little bit later as to the impact on the general fund. Additionally, as you may be aware, the sale of the open property during the year led the district to about 380 grand during 2015. And then additionally, there was a net reduction in the salaries and benefits due to the contract negotiations that took place during the year and switched to the January 1 contract year, calendar year contracts as a result of some concessions from the teachers and support staff. There was about $500,000 in savings this year below. So definitely some, just kind of one-year items we wanted to bring up to your attention. Go to the next slide. This represents the general fund balance sheet for 2015 and 2014. What you notice is the largest asset on the books is still the receivables, which represent primarily the July and August state aid payments that were not received as of June 30th. So those received in the summer, they tend to be the largest asset on the books. Additionally, you'll note, you know, under the liabilities, you guys have a state aid anticipation note, and this is drawn down upon generally to help bridge the cash shortfall due to the timing of payments from the state and just your general operational obligations. Go to the next slide. This represents the general fund's revenue, broken out by the different sources, excluding the Mifid 147(c), which are funds from the state to help fund the pension obligation. What's important to note here is that, again, the majority of the general fund revenues are from the state. That's where a lot of the money does come from. And it was up slightly from 2014 primarily due to an increase in per pupil allowance of about $50 a head, but partially offset also by a decrease in pupils from 2014 to 2015. Overall, revenues are up about $2 million primarily due, again, to a couple of those one-time issued items, including the Act 18 sale of the open land.
You take out those one-time items, you'll see that the revenues are really stagnant year-over-year. You got a slight increase in your foundation allowance, but that was really offset by a smaller drop in pupil count. So just look year-over-year apples against apples. It's really stagnant year from a revenue perspective.
The next slide, this is kind of the flip side. It's the total general fund expenditures, again excluding Mifid 147(c) contributions due to pension liability. You'll notice that overall, the district was able to keep total expenditures very similar to the prior year. But again, we just wanted to point out, the majority of the general funds' costs are related to salaries and benefits. Again, that was, they're down slightly due to that decrease in the health and salary concessions made during the contract negotiations, but that's partially offset by the, you know, what seems to be always increasing retirement contributions on behalf of the district. Go to the next slide. This represents the, really, it shows the per pupil, how much is going into your classroom relative to just kind of other operational expenditures. And then we compare this to the peers, your other peers in the district, other peer districts in the area. You'll see that Saline still spends, you know, on, you know, per dollar of operating expenditures, 65 cents really goes straight into the classroom, which is really great to see, especially compared to some of the others in the area. The next slide. So this represents the change in the general fund balance over the past eight years or so. And over that time span, the net increase of the general fund was about $530,000. But again, we wanted to kind of point out that a lot of that is due to this one-time Act 18 stabilization money that we received this year. Without that money, the increase this year would have been about $575,000. And over the last eight years, then you're looking at a decrease of about $750,000. But I think it's really important to note the, you know, the positive trend that the general fund is experiencing, increasing the fund balance. Go to the next slide. This represents the district's fund balance as a percentage of total expenditures, which was used by a lot of districts just to kind of gauge where they're at compared to the state, other districts in the state. You see the general fund's fund balance is still below the state average. Again, we wanted to kind of show and break out the differences as if we didn't have the Act 18 funds in 2015. But again, this is also trending upwards, which is...
You know, so this is our highest fund balance. We include it above the Act 18 at least since 2009. Looking at 2009, the state fund balance averaged 13.3%. Now we're up to 7.2, and the state average has come down. We're actually starting to fight that trend a little bit. States come into kind of gizmos, and we're actually on the way of that.
Yeah, it's a continual effort. And so from the state perspective, the economy hasn't been that great. The additional funding on a per pupil basis has been just incremental each year, and you see what's happening with retirement costs, and we're at about 24% of the retirement rate now. And I remember the days it was 14%, right? And now it's at 24. It's almost a double. It was 100% change year-over-year. You got that, you know, think about just all the utility costs and transportation costs and just inflation in general. We're always fighting that. So at least we've got a nice trend here since 2012. Takes a lot of work to get there because your number-one cost is personnel cost. You know, you can only squeeze so much out of that $7 million of other. It's all the personnel costs. It's a big piece of the budget.
So, next slide here.
Yeah, I thought I'd give you an overview of this. So, you know, we put this in letters in the last couple of years. We talked about a big accounting change that was happening for school districts in Michigan. Essentially, what's happened is the governmental accounting standards were, oh, be great, if we took a look at the pension liability at the state level and dropped it down to each individual school district, and then we said, "Let's take that and put it on your balance sheet." So, you know, within your financial statements, you have two balance sheets. You have a short-term balance sheet, which is the fund level, which is your general fund. Then you have a long-term balance sheet, which is like a corporation. If you look at a public company's statement, it's the long-term balance sheet. It's got all your capital assets, all your fixed assets, buildings, equipment, but it also has like a long-term debt. So all the bonds and things of that nature, bonds, and the long-term liabilities are also in that. Well, the pension liability is on that long-term balance sheet, if you will. So those get reported in your general fund. Your annual payments, your monthly payments into the pension system, they get reported in your general fund, but the actual liability does not. So it's kind of off the balance sheet, if you will, and a lot of districts, you know, they're going to look at this and not really do much with it. The number that the state has allocated to Saline District, to Saline Schools, is $81.2 million. So that's what they're saying, is your share of that unfunded liability up at the state level. What does that mean? I don't know. It's not like they're going to shut the doors on you like what happened with GM, right? I mean, so it's just a long-term liability. To me, that says that there's a fundamental problem that the state has to deal with. And you see what's happening in your budget every year. You've got this incremental change in the retirement rate that you have to reach into your pocket and put back to the state and say, "Here's our contribution to that liability." I don't know exactly where this is going to go, but it was just an accounting standards change that mandated that liability to push down to the district level. So it won't change things from an operational standpoint. I don't think you'll make decisions based on that. I think most districts don't. I know one district, Zero Dline, I remember they used to look at the full accrual to report the long-term liability for a balance sheet when they were making some decisions. So they didn't know in the district I knew about that would actually look at that balance sheet for decision-making purposes. But when you throw that on there, it basically says you're upside down, you're pumped.
(inaudible).
Everybody else, everybody else, every district would be upside down, being insolvent, you know, from just pure definitional standpoint.
And the rating firms have already taken that to...
That's right. Yeah, the rating firms, you know, they look at each district from a bonding perspective. They've already taken this into account. It doesn't impact you in that perspective. So it's an accounting issue that you got to deal with, but from a decision-making perspective, it probably isn't anything you need to do.
So just kind of summarize this before we just sit there.
So, that's our presentation. If you have any questions, we...
Janice, kudos to you and your department for getting that done expediently and excellently. I know you hate when you get those little things when in the wrong department, kind of tick marks, so good job by your department. Thank you. Action items. Can I have a recommended motion to approve the application of Kathy Crone, who served on the Saline District Library Board of Trustees for a two-year term beginning on December
Kathleen Crone is, she's a parent of two former Saline grads, one, we lived way back in the day. She's a Pittsfield Township president, Gerald Crone. Her husband served on the Saline area school board and is currently a trustee for Pittsfield. He's just been active, most recently set to retirement and is a member of the Foundation for Saline area Schools and chairs the grants committee. An avid reader and supporter of the district library, so I think she'd be a good fit. She would be replacing Don Filet. Don's been on the district library board for many, many years and is stepping down, retiring from that role. She's representative for Saline area schools.
All those in favor, please signify by saying yes. Those opposed? Hearing none. Motion carries seven to zero. Can I have a recommended motion to adopt the resolution urging the legislature to support and continue to allow school districts to purchase electric supply from an alternative energy supplier?
So move. So there are two House bills that were passed through the House Energy Policy Committee last week, House Bill 4297 and 4298. And 4298 in particular affects electric choice. I believe that the version, as it was passed, would require alternative suppliers to purchase three years of physical capacity to show that they have that capacity on hand, and it's an unreasonable requirement that's not required in other states and would probably drive those alternative suppliers out of the state. Saline area schools has purchased their electricity through MSEC, which is the Michigan Schools Energy Cooperative since 2002, and it has saved the district over $2 million in that time. We also purchased our heating fuel through Constellation Energy and have saved substantial amounts of money from them as well. So we really do support electric choice and hope that you would sign a resolution that we could send up to the state showing that it's an important thing to the school districts. If we hadn't saved that $2 million, our fund balance would look quite different right now. So, there is someone that has introduced legislation to allow public schools to access school, electric choice. Not all school districts were able to get choice because they capped it at 10%, and so not all schools got into it that we have. I don't know where that legislation will end up, if it will get through or not.
Do you know who's sponsoring this? DTE?
I'm sure they're supporting the legislation. I'm not sure who the sponsoring legislators were.
Would this affect residential customers that also buy off the grid?
Yes. Interesting.
Somebody with big shoes is trying to start something, huh?
Questions? All those in favor, please signify by saying yes. Those opposed? Hearing none. Motion carries seven to zero. Discussion items. Superintendent Grayton will talk about how the bond's going to go now that it's passed.
Yeah, a couple of things. One, to pass out a packet here. I'm going to take this down. There should be two draft RFPs and then a cover memo. Do you have one, Paul? So one, start with the official draft memo or the memo on the top that talks about the bond. We get just a little bit about what happened on that Tuesday. Across the state, there were 25 qualified bond proposals across the state, and 19 of them passed. Looking at that, it's a 76% pass rate. Many of those, nine of the, or eight of those were extensions, so they did not require an increase. I looked at the number of ones, that 11 of the 17 increases passed, so a 65% pass rate across the state in bond proposals that were similar to ours. I did break down and look at the percentage of yes voters in each of those elections. With the exception of Ellsworth, Michigan, they had a 2-mill increase for a $3 million proposal up kind of central northern Michigan. Theirs passed a little bit better, around a 64% clip, and then ours passed at 62%, which was the second highest across the state. So again, I think, you know, kind of echoing President Heineck's comments about voter approval, I think if we look at, you know, from the fact that we were asking for a 1-mill increase... I think if we look at, you know, from the fact that we were asking for a one mil increase, it had an impact in terms of the, the individual taxpayer and individual homeowner in particular. And then to think about, you know, not only did it pass, which will, you know, again, just over half the issues of asking for an increase passed, but second, only Ellsworth in terms of the number of people who turned out to vote yes. It was a great way for us to really understand the commitment that the voters had made to make sure that Seline Schools, and we talked about protecting our future, I think, it echoes that. So, there's that information there to give a sense of where things went related to that. The next component really now for us is to look at hiring an architect, hiring a construction managing, management firm. I've included in your, in what I passed out here, two draft memos or draft RFPs. We met and on Friday went over a couple of items associated with these. We're going to be meeting again tomorrow to dig a little bit deeper and potentially change a little bit in terms of what, we've been trying to identify what's the best and most efficient way for us to, to send out an RFP and certainly what is our best and most efficient way to produce the work that's being done without looking at having ourselves over-managed in a sense in terms of the types of things. Much of the work we talked about being technology, much of the work we talked about being around buses. There's what we call FFNE or furniture. We need to have architecture and construction management fees associated with those projects. What are the things that we can do in-house versus what are the things that we need their support on? And we know there's going to be a mix. And so, our proposal that we're looking to take forward and we'll be really digging through tomorrow is to really look at saying, is there a way for us to potentially RFP the first three years of the proposal? If you remember, it's a $67.5 million, 10-year kind of bond proposal, of which 40 million was the first year, of which, you know, 85 percent of it needs to be spent in the first three years. So, essentially, half, just under half of the entire bond proceeds will be spent over the next three years. And so, that really feels for us, that's from the lion's share of the management services are going to be needed from an A&E and architectural engineering standpoint and from a construction management standpoint. So, we've been reviewing these documents, thinking about ways to tighten this up, to make sure that we're asking for appropriate help in terms of what we need, but ultimately not looking to sign long-term agreements that put us in a situation where we're being managed over time and in areas where we feel we have proficient skills and capacity to be able to handle those. So, that's our next real phase. Our intention is to get the, these RFPs on the street as quickly as possible, frankly, this is Friday. So, by the end of this week, the RFPs will be out. If you flip to the back of the, of each of the proposals, the draft proposals, you'll see a rough timeline. I want to kind of walk through that a little bit so the board and the community understands where we're going. So, again, intending to get these proposals out on Friday, sending those out to, really posting them, getting them out to certainly a group of people who've contacted us and are interested in that. Requiring, we're talking about bringing them back on the 30th, although we're talking about bumping that due date back because one of the things that, that many of the firms are going to want to do is tour the schools. We have a date coming up, the 26th of, pardon, the 25th of November is No School Day, and it's a Wednesday before Thanksgiving. It's an ideal day for us to have contractors and construction firms and architects in, touring new facilities, getting a sense of what they're up against, allowing us to talk about priorities and scope of work for that first three-year window. And so, our intention is that Mr. Clary and his team will be providing tour opportunities on that Wednesday before. And so, we just want to bump that back instead of having them do on the 30th, having them do a week later in terms of being able to do those tours. We'll be conducting interviews, and again, probably the week of, still looking at, you know, similar to that week, but ultimately looking at potentially having us, asking for a special board meeting on December 15th. We don't feel like we're going to be able to be able to make effective recommendations to the board by the meeting on the 8th. So, looking at the 15th in terms of having an opportunity for us to, asking the board at that time to authorize us to begin negotiating with identified vendors based on the RFP process. We talked a little bit in our finance meeting, and I talked a little bit to President Heineck about the process for the RFP, having, having board members sit in on the RFPs as we interview. Looking potentially after getting the RFPs back, screening down and interviewing three architectural firms and three construction firms, but we will invite board participation in those meetings as soon as we know for sure. These dates may, again, these are draft dates. We'll know by the, probably by Thursday morning, what our intended schedule is for interviews, and we'll communicate that out to the board. But as you can see, it's a relatively tight timeline for us to get moving. We love to be able to say we know who we're going to be working with by the end of, by the 15th of December, allow us to begin negotiating. But ultimately, for us to complete the projects that we've talked about in terms of our safe and secure entries and some of the X-year work we're talking about from a drive standpoint out here, we really need to get those projects designed, we get the process that will include staff and stakeholder community feedback in terms of this. So, there's going to be a planning timeline, getting bids done and getting our bids out as quickly as possible. We are concerned somewhat with the, with the cost of construction. We saw there were 17 or 19 bond issues across the state passed. There's only a limited number of contracts. We want to be timing the market effectively to make sure we're getting good value for the work that we're getting done and want to get done. And so, we're going to rush and be fast as we do, but we're not going to be so concerned about pace and speed that we're going to do something that doesn't meet the needs of the community long-term. So, that's the planning right now. Any questions about that portion, and I'll touch a little bit on the actual sale of the bonds.
Did King Scott have input on these RFPs? Did they help or did they just?
We, no, these are through MSBO and other organizations that we've got. These are just kind of what I would call draft or template RFPs. They're familiar with them. I have spoken to King Scott, and they will be, they're very interested in work here. It's been a good relationship so far.
So, the building work you're anticipating to have done by start of school in September?
Yes, well, as of, today is November of what? Yes, and Rex isn't here, so I can say that. One of, one of our fundamental concerns is how soon can we get in because the type of work we're talking, I'll use Pleasant Ridge as an example, the type of construction work that we want to do there between June 15th and, you know, early September is extreme in terms of, what do you think about that? We have talked about, I've spoken to Principal Bezu in particular with those, with every way potential for us to begin demo work around Memorial Day. If that's the case, we'll grab a couple of weeks, particularly maybe our Spanish classes could be taught. Else, we're in the building for those last couple of weeks to allow us to get a jump on that. Until we really have the, the construction and architecture engineers to really sit down and help us with that schedule, it's going to be tight. I don't want to say right now that it'll be done because we need it done right. I don't want to make decision and design, decisions based on getting open by the first day of school. If we know the right design decision makes, means that it's completed by the first day in October, we're going to start that project and we're going to get it done as quickly as possible. If for some reason the project's not completed the first day of school, we'll have alternative plans to make sure we're providing education to all the students right there.
Always important to get it done right.
Yeah. I'm equally concerned in terms of the drive here.
Right, right.
We may need to, you know, have some, some minor alternatives as we progress through that. You know, weather comes into play and some other things on those outside bonds, so.
Pleasant Ridge shouldn't have weather issues.
Shouldn't, yeah. All right, and just what I...
But the drive is...
Yeah, I've talked a lot about the entry point at Pleasant Ridge. Our intention is to focus on the entry points of all of the buildings next summer. The other ones are just, they're less in terms of substantial, but there's a lot of them. So, again, it becomes a management issue in terms of making sure that we're doing it, the designs are right, the contractors, materials are available. I mean, again, it gets into a lot of different aspects that we want to make sure we're doing it right, doing it appropriately, but we also want to make sure it's a priority for the contractors that are out there.
Can they be doing all those simultaneously? That seems like a lot of...
We may need, right, it is a lot. We may need multiple contractors doing certain ones, you know. Certainly from a design standpoint, from a management standpoint, in conversations they feel comfortable they can do that. But we may have, the people who are doing the heritage and the metals entry points may not be the same company that's involved with Pleasant Ridge, et cetera. Questions about? As part of it, after the RFPs are done, there will be a bond planning team. We'll talk more about that at following meetings, but there's going to be, this will really drive the conversation at this table and really throughout the district over the next several years. It's an opportunity for us as a board and as an administrative team and a community to really kind of define that pathway for our students moving forward. So, I'm excited about it, but again, it's a lot of work for us to do and make sure we do it and do it right. The, the one thing that also needs to happen along, we actually need to sell bonds in order to have money. And so, we met with Paul Starter, the finance committee leader. I don't want to steal the thunder.
You guys can just keep on going.
It's kind of part of the, part of the, part of the bond proposal. We talked about how we want to go about selling the bonds, and there's essentially a competitive sale that you can do and there's a negotiated sale. Talking with Paul Starter, looking at the market, we feel that we would make a recommendation, and we can touch on it again later, to do a negotiated sale. We have a potential partner associate that who's done some other things with the district who's offered us a very competitive rate as it relates to their services. They can bring in other partners to make sure that we can get enough potential bond buyers to the, to the table for us from an underwriting standpoint. And then ultimately, we'd be looking to sell those bonds in some time in that January window. Budgeted for 5 percent. We think we can get it below that in terms of the quicker we can get the market, the better. But again, once we, once the money arrives, the clock starts in terms of our 85 and 100 percent spend, so it's not as though we want it here tomorrow, but we want it here when we need it. So, we're intending to bring a board resolution to the board their next meeting, two weeks from tonight. So, that's just kind of the status update related to the bond.
Lot of work in a week, thank you.
Yep.
You know, as Mr. Holden liked to say, measure twice, cut once. So, we're going to get those buildings done the correct way. So, our next discussion item is the board self-evaluation. Board policy requires us to self-assess ourselves annually. So, in, I think, the end of September, we did an online survey through the Michigan Association of School Boards. Thank you, everyone, for participating. We are rated ourselves on seven different categories, which are leadership, academic performance and accountability, board responsibilities, board effectiveness, data-driven decision-making, board superintendent relations, and community engagement advocacy. So, considering we had two new board members, I think Alan was only at one meeting before he had to take the survey, so he gave us a lot of excellence, just based on that. But no, really, we didn't do badly. Our highest score was on board superintendent relations, and our lowest was on data-driven decision-making. Everything, I didn't do it over presentation, but everything was in the good and satisfactory overall across all the categories. Community engagement was a little, little low on some of the scores, so we're going to be working on that. We had no unsatisfactory ratings on any of our categories, so that was pretty good. Two of our lower percentages were, I think, kind of affected a little bit by the don't-know answers from some of our board members who have not been around as long as others. So, overall, I think we did a good job, and I think we continue to improve. So, does anyone have any comments about the, I sent all of you this, these graphs, I think, about three or four weeks ago. So, did anyone have any comments or?
I have a couple of comments. Did you guys evaluate it yourself? One, one of the things in terms of, I think, you know, about the, the community feedback or community engagement piece, we, as I just talked about, we will have a lot of opportunity as a board and administration to engage the community throughout this bond. So, I think one of the things in terms of saying, hey, are there things we can do to kind of engage the community in different ways? One, I would point to the recent campaign as an opportunity that we have engaged the community. But next would be, how can we continue to involve not only our parents and students, but other members of our community in terms of engaging them and getting feedback in terms of what the, how we go about spending these dollars and how we go about including the district? So, I think it aligns well. We say that's an area of focus for us as a board, or you as a board, that's, we have an opportunity to have a natural kind of feeder system for that process. And the second one was the data-based decision-making, and I talked a little bit to President Heineck about that today. One of the things that I think we will see, and this, this evaluation tool is designed for boards across the state, and one of the things that Mr. Lott and I talked a lot about, and came up at a recent thing, is we talk a lot about research-based decisions. And I will tell you what's the types of activities that we're looking at from a school district. The research isn't there. We are trying to be innovative. We've kind of branded ourselves and put ourselves to be an innovative school district. So, I just want to caution a little bit in terms of, we need data, we need to have good facts when we make decisions, but ultimately, we're looking to push the envelope. And as we do that, looking backwards at, you know, what research says on some things or what the data says, if we look at student achievement data, meaning the student achievement measures that are in place now for us to look at aren't as relevant to where we think we want to go and where the community, I think, feels comfortable saying we want to go. So, we just need to balance that to make sure it's kind of the do no harm. We don't want our scores to go down, but also we don't want to be driven by trying to move, you know, a specific needle in sixth-grade science. We want to make sure that we're producing lifelong learners and engaging learners. And so, we just need to kind of walk that line and make sure we always balance our perspectives associated with, yes, we need to look at student achievement data in order to make good decisions, but we can't let that in a micro, in a kind of a vacuum, drive how we want to lead our, our school district. So, those are my two comments, but again, I applaud the board for, for doing the self-evaluation and ultimately also for being pretty honest in terms of how they reflect, how you reflected on your, where you're at.
While we're on Michigan Association of School Board topics, there are training classes on December 4th and 5th up at the Oakland School District, which is a little northeast of Fallows Mall for reference. I know Trusty Delhay, Superintendent Graydon and I are taking the superintendent evaluation course, but there is a whole catalog of courses that are open those two days, so feel free to take a look at it, and Mrs. Walz will register you for anything that you would like to take. So, it's a good opportunity since it's kind of close to home. I'm dropping my wife off at the mall this hour. We're at class. It may be a big mistake, but...
It's a costly day for you.
It could be costly. Our next discussion item is the board finance committee update. Trusty Austin?
Pretty much the only thing that hasn't been touched so far is two, an hour and a half, or hour and 45 minutes is a long period. Yeah, we, we met with Paul. He was there to talk about selling the bonds. And then the RFP with the architect and the construction company, I mean, that is going to be fast, so Scott's got to work that off on there. And then a brief discussion about the facilities committee that's going to create, and it might be a little overlap with the finance committee too with that. And then Janice presented some stuff about the audit, which everybody's already good about, and the electric choice resolution.
Did you have, was there an update on the budget to date? Are, are we tracking or?
Uh, no, there was not.
But we're tracking good?
Yeah, it's still really early.
Okay.
Checking.
Thanks, Tim.
Yeah, we probably want to work around the RFP window. That's kind of your focus.
Consent agenda. Can I have a motion to authorize the following items as part of the consent agenda? A, approval of the Special Board of Education meeting minutes of October 21st, 2015. B, approval of the Regular Board of Education meeting minutes of October 27th, 2015. C, approval of payment of the general fund accounts payable of November 10th, 2015 in the amount of $241,383.22. And D, receiving and file the November curriculum and financial reports.
Second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying yes. Those opposed? Hearing none, the motion passes seven to zero. Items scheduled on the next agenda, it will be a workshop meeting. We will be discussing the...
Strategic framework and with a, with a bend towards the kind of a quick update on the Heritage Launch Program. We'll go a little bit more about that program. So, we're talking about the framework in terms of some of the process we're using for reviewing it, so you get a sense of where we're going with that. Some of the potential modifications we're at, going to be asking probably at the end of the year related to the framework and then kind of an update there and then focus on Heritage Launch. We will also have a board resolution related to the sale, sale of bonds.
Trusty Delhay, would you have a policy committee?
Yeah, well, do you want that one or the following?
When is your meeting?
Before, before the meeting, the following. Yeah, normally it's the following.
Okay, that's right, study session.
Don't pressure me.
I know it's the holidays, no pressure.
Pork card's done, you hear something?
This is our second chance for a member of the public to comment to the board. Would anybody like public comment? Hearing none. Our next meeting will be November 24th, 2015 at 6:30 PM here at Liberty School Media Center. Can I have a motion to adjourn the Regular Board of Education meeting on November 10th, 2015 at 7:20 PM? Will you move?